Good evening, first week of daylight savings time and it's light out at Town Hall at six o'clock for Monday, March 11th, 2024. We're in the Select Board Conference Room. This meeting is being held in a hybrid fashion and is being recorded. If anyone is recording the meeting, let Jason know. In attendance tonight is myself, Doug Mogul, Vice Chairman Jason Peron, Clerk Diane Gale, CAO Steinhardt is on Zoom, Assistant CAO Nadine Signoni is here in person, and Lisa Anderson is in the other room. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Brown, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Can you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance tonight?
I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance, flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
All right, let's start off with public comment. I don't remember if I started in the room or on Zoom last week, and I didn't review my notes. So let's start within the room. Does anyone in the room have any public comments? Well, then I obviously made the right choice. How about on Zoom? Anybody have any public comments that they'd like to address to the Select Board that is not on our agenda this evening? Oh, boy, we may be getting to set a land speaker speed record tonight. I know I did. Okay, first, we're gonna pay some bills. We're gonna acknowledge payables warrant number.
It is not in the meeting.
Who?
Carl?
Carl's there. He's right there in the upper right. It's just this is set up kinda funny.
Yeah, I had, you know, was asking people because I, since I got let in late, that's why I didn't know what was going on.
Oh, I see. I couldn't see you, Carl. I thought you got booted out.
Okay, let's get back to the business at hand. Acknowledge payables warrant number 2421B dated March 4th in the amount of $227,891.18. And we're gonna acknowledge and approve the open session meeting minutes from March 4th. I know I reviewed them and sent them back. Anyone else have any comments, questions, motions?
I do not. I will make a motion to accept them.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Unfortunately, we have to acknowledge, we'll do this as an omnibus thing, to acknowledge Maria Gallo is resigning from the Southwick Public Library Board of Trustees and the Southwick Cultural Council. And I'd like to ask that we prepare a certificate for Ms. Gallo and that we also, I believe for the library and for cultural council, we can post those vacancies. Because they are, Library Board of Trustees is elected, so that would be until the next election. And for cultural council is an appointment, and we'll have to review the terms of that because that one's confusing.
Yeah, I mean, on the library one, if the library one is just gonna be for the remainder of her term, we'll have to check with the clerk's office to see about just notifying the groups and the parties about that person running for whatever the balance of that term is.
That would be a good idea.
So I'll make a note of that for Jess.
Thank you.
Because she is working on warrant article number one for the annual warrant, which is the same as the election warrant.
Correct. Okay. Next is the approval of contract addendum number one for a one Nadine Signoni. I need a motion, please.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, please. Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Approval of updated letter of understanding for DPW Supervisor Richard Bozak for fiscal year '25 to '27. I need a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Okay. Then you're here, David. You're coming right up here.
Yeah, it looked like it was near the weekend.
So we have a, there was some back and forth on this. I saw, and this is a request from Park and Recreation for hours and pay adjustments for seasonal employees. And this was in our folder, but there was some additional discourse today on this.
Karen ever sent in the actual dollar numbers?
Correct. So we have those now, but Carl, do you want to give some color to this, or?
Well, I think this is based upon some of the input that you received from members at the Park and Rec Commission meeting in the past couple of months, and it was for them to go ahead and start staffing up the levels needed to take care of the park requirements, which would include the mowings and the maintenance and things of that nature, which had been going through Cindy before, but then David had run into some issues trying to recruit people. So we really didn't get the work product and the services and the people that we needed. So this is to allow the board to take care of that issue on our behalf and get us back to where we are. So Kara's been out there doing outreach and so forth. So these are the types of jobs people are not banging down our doors to take. So this will allow us to, you know, within the monies that they have, especially for the remainder of this fiscal year, but looking like as well as the funds they have plugged in for fiscal year '25 numbers, to make sure that we can appropriately have these individuals doing the mowing in the field, game preparations for sport leagues. So that's an important thing, and so that's why I'm sure David's there tonight. And the chairperson, Jean, had been emailing yourself and myself today, sir, and we just wanna make sure we advance this thing because the playing seasons are gonna be coming upon us very soon. So we've got to get these fields in good working and playing condition.
Two and a half weeks, who's counting? So what the math back and forth was basically, they wanted to have two part-time employees at a higher rate of pay.
We talked to a few people already, and one of the employees worked for the town of Westfield, doing all their parks and grounds and ball fields. So he retired, basically looking for a part-time job. That's why it was got a little higher. The other person has worked with him and also done park things. Two out of them, he's locked in. So there, this is what they were looking for, but we figured if it didn't work out with them, we're not gonna go for the same rate of pay. It would currently be downward to do with somebody not experienced, but talking with the two of them at the same time, they would be able to take care of the field during the week, the mowing twice a week on the fields, the lining. But then we have enough money left over for somebody at the lower rate to line the fields on Saturdays and Sundays.
And the math checks out. So we did a little, I did a little bit of back and forth math with those guys, and within $40 of, yeah, what budget amount was with the two at the higher rate and one at the lower rate as a lesser hours, it can easily be done, but.
And these are seasonal employees that start in April and they're done by the end of October. Non-beefed.
They're going a little bit longer, more into the middle of November because softball's been running, the baseball travel teams that we get wanna go, and so it gets me to feel their figures anymore, basically.
Softball guys play past that. We played on a frozen field this year. But anyway, but I don't see a problem with it going in that direction. They're within the budget number that was established and within their parameters for what they presented for the July 1 budget.
Feel real comfortable.
I think I know who one of them is.
You may not need the holder.
Oh, yeah. That's who I think it is. I'm very comfortable.
Guy just to do weekend things.
And you have somebody that you think is gonna take those short hours?
Yeah, we've talked to somebody that's done it before.
When you said retired, I'm pretty sure I have a good idea who my.
So do we have to vote on that, Carl, or we just kinda say proceed?
Yeah, you should, you should vote to request the submit, the submission by the Park and Recreation Commission and authorize them to work with Nadine to bring on those seasonal people so we can get that facility ready and up and running.
Would you like to make that motion, sir?
I would make that motion to abide by what the Park and Rec has presented here.
Second.
Roll call vote. Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Well, thank you. Things are starting to come together for us.
You know, every now and then, we plan, we plan, but, you know.
So you're gonna go make a phone call now?
No, I mean, we talked about this.
I'm sure Kara will before it ended a little.
Right. So we talked about this a little bit on Saturday, too, and some of the other stuff when we play. I think we're all getting closer. We're all on agreement on.
Starting all come together.
All right, great. All right, next, we have a few sewer elderly rate applications for, and we'll try to put these together as an omnibus motion to save some time. 12 Iron Horse Hill, Darlene, no, that's not right.
Amy Starling.
Amy Starling at 12 Iron Horse Hill, 21 Rails End, which is Kevin Campion, and 19 Septon, which is Ms. Maya. So these have all received water senior rates. So we've been, if they've been vetted and approved by the Water and DPW, we've been kinda taking their word for it that they've done the vetting. So I'd entertain a motion to approve those three sewer elderly rate applications as read.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
I almost forgot the voting part. Here we go. Yeah, I know who it is. Carl, we're gonna put you on mute for a minute. Okay, it is Carl.
Yeah.
Okay, so we need, just come off mute when we need you, bud. There was some background noise. Approve the proposed fiscal year community development block grant submission budget from PVPC Pioneer Valley Planning submission.
Make a motion to approve that grant.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye. Just a correction, that was to approve the budget for administration, not the grant.
Correct. Grant submission budget. Correct. Okay, approve and sign the nomination of Inspector of Animals for Lizanne Bennett. So we are apparently amongst our other things, the nominator of the Inspector of Animals. Acceptance of nomination, that's, she gets to sign that. And who signs it?
You're gonna be the nominating authority. It says Joe Dini's still online. That was supposed to be you.
Okay, we'll touch that. So make a motion for the chair to nominate.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye.
Vote to approve the lead water service line inventory amendment request for $15,001,5,000 for tie-in bond contract. Randy's here. Randy, would you like to talk to this?
Sure. If you recall, a few months ago, the board signed a lead service line inventory contract with tie-in bond. This is being run to the water department. One of the scope items was to look at all of our water service cards, scan them, and pull off information that might be, might be pertinent to the water service size and material. So as they're, they went through the cards, there are more cards than they had anticipated. So what they're asking for is an amendment to the original contract for $15,000 to go through the additional cards. And the good news is, it's all being paid for through an SRF grant, so there's no, no cost impact to the town. And the water commissioners did take on this, reviewed this request last Thursday evening, and they approved it. So we're passing along to you for your review and approval as well.
Discussion.
These are like field service cards, Randy?
Yeah, correct. Most of them are, they're like a three-by-five card stock. Most are handwritten, you know, when the service was installed. Correct.
They're pretty cool if you ever get a chance to look at them.
Oh, I'll make it a point.
Yeah, I saw them at DPW one time when I was down there, and it's got stuff from way back with a little drawing of the house and the line and other notes scribbled on there. And, oh, it's really kinda cool. It'll be great to have them digitized, but it is kind of neat to see how they did it previous.
All right.
It's, it's in a Rolodex.
Yeah.
We'll see you know them a long time.
Old school, really old.
Real old school. So I need a motion to approve the amendment.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye?
Jason Peron, aye.
Diane Gale, aye. That'll move us toward a lot of digitized records.
Yes. Okay, so the next is the hardest discussion of the night. Choose a cover and back page picture for the 2023 Town Report.
You can pass that.
All right, what's, what's your number one, Jason? Let's see if we have some consensus building going on right now.
My number one, if I, oh, there it is.
Yours?
I kinda like number one on the front, if we can be creative and take out some of all that grass, because that is our picture of Southwick. That is my alternate number one.
Okay.
You know, skew it a little bit, put some kind of leather edging on it, crop it that way.
You mean like crop it?
Diagonally on the corners and cut off some of the green.
I think you could jog over here. I'm not kidding. Not kidding. If you were to do that. Where's your one?
That's my one. Actually, Nadine told me I couldn't use number two because it was basically the same picture, just a little different. So my number two.
That one's prettier. It's got more color.
Yes, it does. My number two ended up going to the, I believe, the picture we just, actually, no, that was my number two. Number two. My other one was the one, number one for the back cover.
So this is the back, this is your back cover?
This would be my number one for the back.
Oh, we get to choose the back cover. Oh, then that's a perfect back cover.
Okay, we decided the back cover. We got that one covered. All right, do we go to the wider audience here on number one?
This one?
I'm not.
The closer up one, one is a little bit.
My, all right. Well, don't, 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 don't foil the jury.
I'm just writing back cover. That's all. Over.
Do we need to do this tonight? This needs to be done tonight? Yeah, fortunately.
At least it's dropping at the bit.
I can't wait to see the seven pictures. We gotta picture us, which is the best one. I'm kidding.
The one that I'm not.
I was gonna say the one that I wasn't at, right? David, what do you think?
I like the lake picture with the pier.
Bingo.
There you go. You got two votes for, are you okay with that one, too?
The town one for the.
Bingo.
Oh, no, he's talking for the cover.
The cover, front cover.
The cover, I'd probably go with that.
Okay, that's me, too.
The light in the back, that's just.
All right. You're not in your head all along.
I, because that one's the perfect picture, the top one. It's quintessential.
You okay?
Yeah.
Or you're not okay? So, okay, we'll keep going.
Yeah, it's a nice shot with the sun.
I'm not a big fan of either, but I see what she's saying about cropping it and get the jog over here, the jog guy.
Or the town seal.
He's not a pavement.
Town seal there.
One of the things we're very, very, very well known for is our lake.
And that's not all we are.
No, it's not. Because that's a lot of tops of roofs and street.
Right. I don't disagree with you, Jason.
But there's more of our town that's not included.
Have we ever used?
My house is missing, but.
Did you forget?
Yeah, I'm good. Thanks, David.
I just think this is a.
I think the cemetery one is awesome, but not for the front of the town report.
I hadn't.
It's exactly what I told me so.
It can go on, but.
It's a good idea.
Commission page.
I just think this is a very pretty picture.
Which one, Jason? Which one?
Number one. Because remember, I can't have number two, you told me.
So you can't have both of them. You can pick one or the other.
So I'm picking number one. My number one is my number one.
Which is, what's your number two that you can't have?
This is the same, yeah, it was just a different view.
Yeah, this is better foliage.
I just really like this. It's a beautiful picture of our wonderful lake. With a nice, the nice mountain in the background. Said, I just don't like, if it was a different, different.
For those following at home.
I thought this would be, you're right, this is gonna end up being the hardest decision of them.
I told you.
I'll go with, if you two think that's the front and we're all about the lake.
Can we put jog out on the pier?
If we're all about the lake, we're all about the lake.
Hmm?
Like, where's Waldo?
Yeah, we put a little jog out on the lake.
Next year, we'll go my way.
Anybody, any deal? Any objections?
If you're not happy with those, you have, I have it till Friday.
She has 17.
Kind of debating us. All right. So, all right, let's take, let's actually take a formal vote. So we got the, we agreed on the back picture, right? Was gonna be the.
Town.
The guy on the.
The town of the lake, which.
Which was the one on, all right, let's, let's do this as, make sure we get it right.
That was the back.
That's the back.
That's the back cover. Okay, so that's, mark that one.
Oh, sorry.
You don't like it?
No.
All right.
Well, I know Diane likes that picture of the town. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to the town for the back cover. Said, I just, it's just the, I don't like the left, just rooftops and.
I don't like the leaves in the front of the picture. Takes away from it, if you ask me.
And it's not the back cover anymore?
No, I think it's fine for the back cover. I just wouldn't want it on the front cover. That's my opinion.
That was my number one for the back cover, but I know Diane likes her city scene, so I wouldn't be, wouldn't be opposed to.
Have a city.
Well, excuse me, town scene.
I bet there's a lot of parking lot.
That's, yeah.
Well, it is.
If you could cut in more on the church and somehow get the church in the inn and not as much parking, and you get the town complex in the background.
Certainly manipulate that photo. Jason.
Jason, yes. See any one of there. So I think more of a, a less rooftop would have been more. Or more straight on this way.
It's kinda nice though with the, it's not that hard. Why you at the Town Hall here?
The mountains are very beautiful as well.
Yes, we can. This side of the street better?
I'd come down a little bit to get the.
I'm sorry?
Jason Jagir's wife here, Angelina.
Yep.
Hi. Just let me know what you need, and we can, we can take a new shot if you need one.
Okay.
Thank you, Angelina.
Can we go with some theme of this if we manage to cut it, get jog in here, the Southwick seal? And you see, you got the Town Hall here, church here, in here.
Yeah, if we can amend it so it's not so much rooftop.
All right, anyone wanna second his motion?
Sure. And, and put a picture up there so Angie sorta knows what we're.
Yeah, we'll get it, we'll get it to you after the meeting, Angie.
This one amended is the cover?
That's the cover, and the one we already decided on the back, because everyone in it, okay with that except for Buddy. And anyone playing along at home that wants to chime in, I know we haven't even shown it off very good, but.
Always gotta be fun, right? Now, while we're on.
Absolutely. If we pleased everybody, I would have to get up and leave.
I hope, you know, there are people do a contest for people to submit their own photos.
Next year.
Iconic town. We gotta do that.
Next year, we shall do that, because we just ran out of runway this year.
Could continue.
All right.
What's that? We can promote that.
Can you put that on the calendar?
You're so fancy.
Okay, done. Old business, moving right along. COA Director Internal Posting, colon, done.
Done, checked.
And that closes what date?
April 5th.
Okay, Police Chief Internal Recruitment Process, April 1st interview.
I would like to discuss this, Mr. Chairman.
I knew you did.
So I have a look, last few weeks, we moved forward with the plan to replace Justland's upon his retirement. We know initially I spoke about possibly accepting outside applications, and we decided against that. And now we have two very viable and capable candidates. So that'd be an easy decision, and both have different strengths, weaknesses, skill sets, personalities, and abilities. Diane mentioned several weeks ago, the makeup of this board was very well suited to make a selection. I still, I don't disagree with that to a point. It's very important, I know personally, what this decision's gonna mean to both the town, the candidates, and the, the men and women of the police department. Having the right person leading your department right now is more important than ever. So I would like to postpone the interviews. I would like this board to reconsider, to revisit the, having an assessment center come in. I presented the package from PSC or whatever, and I spoke with Mr. Wes Stevens. This is the same one I brought forward. As I spoke about this before, it's interesting. We are suited to make this decision to, in my opinion, to a point. With these type two candidates, they're both very highly qualified, and like I said, have their different skill sets. This is pretty much the way the world, police chiefs are going now. There, there is, it, it's not just. I'm never been one of a fan that, because something's always been a certain way, you keep it. If in my opinion, it's wrong, incorrect, whatever you wanna call it. With the, with the, you know, the creation of post and a few other issues. The, we lost the option of the reserve officers and whatnot. There's things that an assessment center can assess that you and I and Ms. Gale, we don't get to see. We don't get to see these chiefs under pressure very often. We don't get to see them make the decisions. It's another way to assess their weaknesses and strengths. Not only that, it lets them know what they may need to work on. Even whether, even if, if they're selected, that gives them something to focus on, and they, hey, maybe I need, now that I know, let me focus on, I'm not saying fixing what's wrong with me, but working on deficiency I may have. It just, they help guide people in their career planning. There were other things I had looking down. You know, we don't see them make certain judgments, the problem analysis. And this assessment center alone puts them under a level of stress that lets us kinda gauge and test there is, you know, who they are. I know we've talked about this in the past. It makes them think on their feet. This is something I feel very strongly with, just basically because of my, as Diane like to call it, my expertise in the landscape of police and law enforcement. Again, it's just, this is the way this is going in the future. Along some, most towns of Southwick's makeup, if they are not a civil service town, they generally take an assessment center. I mean, there's a list of, in this file, of the amount of towns that have gone through these assessments, just this group alone in the last few years. Ware, Pittsfield, I mean, it's far as out this way, we got Ware, we've got Pittsfield, we've got Lanesboro, we've got Dalton, Belcher Town, and a few others. Long Meadow. This is something I said, like I said, I felt very strongly from the beginning. I respected the board's decision before. I just, I've really, with the two great candidates that we have, it's gonna be a hard decision to make, and any little iota I have that, you know, they may, they may come out perfectly equal, but it's gonna be a very hard decision, and this is why I feel this way. Lastly, you know, there is a list based off an email. When I spoke to Public Safety Minister Stevens, I came up with a basic outline of three different scenarios of how we may want it. Spoke with Carl, and interestingly enough, it's actually option number one is the option that I would be leaning towards based after my reading of this. And we have just that exact same amount left in our hired services budget.
This is number one, two, and three.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Discussion, are you through?
Sorry, I am. I am. You know, I've, like I said, I presented this before. I presented it. And I'm just asking the board for reconsideration.
Is this for this position? Is this for this position to be filled, or are you suggesting this for the lieutenant following, if that's the case, or for the sergeant following, if that's the case?
Ultimately, I would like to see some sort of testing and assessment put in for every position in this department. That the other positions, I'm, I'm not, I mean, where our primary focus is, we need a leader. In place, so right now, my concern is putting our, doing whatever we need to do to put our leader in place. Um, sooner rather than later, and one of the things I'd like the board to do is postpone this just long enough for me to at least. I've been emailing, waiting for a response back, if this is something that can be done relatively. Short time, I, I would, would like to request that we do it. If this is something that's gonna be, take months to put in place, then, um, I, I do feel this board can make a decision, but I would like more input.
When did you ask them to get back to him?
Uh, I've been waiting, like, I mean, I asked as soon as possible to get back to him.
When did you ask?
I sent him an email last week and I sent one again today.
That's not a good sign if they haven't responded right away.
I've been waiting, like I said, he's usually pretty good, I did not call him, I will admit that. Um, that's why I'm asking, even if it's, um, we're not meeting next week, we do not have to make this decision today. Um, if people need to sit and digest it a little bit more, I know it wasn't a popular request before, um, I would also give. My, you, my fellow board members a chance to possibly reach out to Mr. Stevens yourself and see what he may have helped to offer that could. Help in this decision.
Your thoughts?
I think it's kinda late in the game and we kinda went through this already, and I think that, um, that Doug Morgan's opinion, um, but one member on a board of three, so. I think, you know, having been through this process. On the chief, really three times, but two full-time chiefs and one chief extension, so, or two and a half times. And, you know, multiple sergeants, uh, couple lieutenants. I think I can, and, and outside of here hiring many, many people through an interview process. I think I can do it. Um, and I think I can do a good job for the town, I think I can. Be fair, impartial, sit through the, the, the interviews, uh, one of the things we do have to look at is the, the question.
Question.
Number of questions we have for each candidate, um, and make a decision, I think. You're right, I, I agree with you that, you know, past practice is not, you know, doctrine.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just don't think we've, I haven't, I haven't seen us make an egregious error as a board. And when I say Zos select board, make an egregious error, um.
Nor was I saying that.
No, 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 but I'm, I'm just from my opinion, I think we are in a good place to do this. We've already kinda put the wheels in motion for the posting and the job description and. Advertise, closed, got our applications and have scheduled those interviews for the first of April, and I, I don't think at this point. Alright, I think with the talent up here, your experience, your experience, my experience, I think we're in a good place. Um, that's my opinion.
I have been doing my homework, talking to the people I need to talk to and getting, I believe, honest feedback. Valuable feedback, I submitted about fifty of those questions and they're not easy questions I submitted. Um, I think we're equipped, well, they're gonna get pared down till six. I, I still think we're in a good position to make a good decision.
Again, I respect my fellow members' opinion.
I, I hate to disagree with you again, but I, I think we're. Well-equipped.
I, I don't believe that we're ill-equipped at all, just, uh, you know, these are two very highly equally camp-qualified candidates and it's going to be a very hard decision. Um, I'm, I'm familiar with both of these gentlemen for a very long time, um, so.
One of them is gonna put their best foot forward.
Well, I believe they're both gonna put their best foot forward, but I'd like to think.
Better foot forward.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've seen that before and, um. And I, honestly, they're both very good candidates and I, I don't, I don't know that we, I, I just think it's gonna, the interview's gonna be telling, I believe, we'll see. And, you know, we're gonna have vigorous debate here when we get to it, as to where we're gonna be and hopefully we come to. A good consensus on that, I think one of the things, you know, as, as we head into, um, you know, mid-March toward April and. You know, one of the things that's been interesting to me on this board is how. We have able, been able to, we, and with, with rare exception, this being one of them, um. Where we've actually gotten to quite good consensus on a lot of issues, we came in, but sometimes.
One on the picture.
Play on the picture was, you know, that was the hardest one so far this year, but, you know, where, where we've been able to get there, you know, and I, I very much feel strongly on an appointment like this. You know, that we wanna have, uh, you know, a decent consensus on the board, I would never say unanimous because, you know, that's not how it works, but. I would like to talk about it until we're all pretty comfortable with the decision, as we move through the process and see how this all shakes out. It's gonna, I, I think it's gonna be interesting, and I think. I think we gotta let the interviews play out.
One of the big things that worried me not doing it ourselves was, as I said, missing seeing and hearing. How would they respond? That's, that's a critical thing for me is.
I'm not, I'm not gonna, like I said, I just wanna say, you would not miss out on that, cause you'd still be doing. This would just be an additional layer, that's all that is, so, but I, I, I respect you, the, your positions. And I have no problem, you know, I've made my case and I appealed my case and that's, that's, that's it. I'm okay with it.
Okay.
If you want to make a comment.
On this particular topic?
Uh. I would say it's just best to.
Yeah.
Go with the bad decision. No offense, I go.
I'm just a bit in a profession and talk about that, just the psychological part of it, that's it.
Buried my agenda in the paperwork as we move through, but hopefully there's nothing else on this page that's in the amended agenda, so thank you, David.
Sure.
Good night.
Okay, Board Evaluations and Appointed Progress. HS, there's not, nothing new this week on that one, right?
Mm-hmm.
I thought we had said we were gonna take that one off.
I think you're on the old agenda.
Okay.
He did take that off, you're working on an, an older agenda, you gotta work under amendment number one.
HSIC, IMA for WG&E for ISP, just to give Inga a stroke, high-speed internet sub, uh, inter-ministerial agreement, so, uh. Um. Mr. Sullivan and I are getting together on Thursday to compile the changes that came out of the meeting last Tuesday. Um. From the high-speed internet sub, and then we're gonna schedule a meeting. To come back to the internet sub to ratify those changes, then send it to here and hopefully get that piece wrapped up. Um, and as I mentioned last week, I think I did anyway, if not, I'll mention it again now, um, we did ask the attorney to. Finish all the work that needs to be done to perfect the formation of. The utility and then we also asked accounting to start putting together, um. A budget page for. The, the utility, so that we, you'll have a running total of everything, and I did have, it was in our folder last week. Um, if you didn't, not this week, but there was a budget of monies expended against monies that we have. And we're still working on the first fifteen thousand dollars of the first apportionment of the. Um, money, thank you. And we have not touched the second tranche, nor filed for any.
Coming soon.
What's that, Carl?
It's coming soon, I think between the legal fees. On, and the poll license application fees that we just had pay in the, in the. And things of that, I saw, I think you, you're close to the end of the first fifteen thousand, and you'll be going into the, the next tier of it. Which was in a subsequent federal fiscal year and that's nine hundred thousand.
Correct.
You'll, you'll, you're watching the bonding money at all.
And like, well, we get, we used to get those and I think we still get them every now and then, the kinda progress reports on certain utility budgets and other, other expenditures, you'll get that. Um, as a regular progress update, and when we execute the IGA or IMA, whatever we're gonna call it. Uh, that's got big dollars attached to it for design, um, it'll have monies in it towards the design process, so that's when you start to spend real money. Not that fifteen thousand dollars isn't real money, but we're talking adding a zero at the end of that number. So, that'll come back in front of this board for, um. Review and approval. Okay. Marijuana dispensary webpage posting HCA process, ten foot RFI voucher, the scoring.
I am still working on the roadmap to how to do it, that I was working with Jessica last week on, or this week, last week, last week. Um, we did receive the model HCA from the CCC, I have not thoroughly reviewed it against what I sent to our attorneys. Nor have I heard anything back from them, so I'm kinda holding at the moment.
Great. Hunting bylaw, did we set a date for that?
No, we were going to, but you probably need the chief here to do that.
Okay.
I, I, I did, I did, I did of course ask the town attorney for a series of draft warrant articles on issues that have been ongoing. Since the fall, so that he can stop preparing them, and one of them was. That, um, draft hunting bylaw, so that the board could use it for a discussion issue at a public forum.
Great. So let's get that and then I'll get with the chief and we can set a date for that. Informational meeting, it does not need to be the night of a select board meeting.
That would make sense. I also have a number of examples if you wanna review them.
Sure.
If you copy. They're very simple forms, but town.
Of the hunting bylaws, uh?
Yeah, very simple form.
Sure, send them, send them to me.
It basically has the bylaw written on it and says you need permission of the property owner, sign this please.
Yeah, I know there was one that Bob had originally circulated.
Can that be done without the town being a party to it at all, that you just need something that, on your hand from the landowner? That you would present?
This is from Commonwealth of Mass, United States of America and the town of.
In that order. No, but I mean, like, why would, I, I don't wanna, I, well, let me not, the place to debate this, but this would be.
Camden Police Department.
Instead of having the town even be a party to it, if you have a, if, whether it's a standard form or whatever, but you produce it when asked. As, as your responsibility as a citizen and a hunter, versus having the town maintain this registry of people, I don't. We've got enough of those, I don't, that's my opinion, I'd love to see.
They all do, it's that count of Blanford.
I did reach out to, uh, environmental, so, uh, Officer Solomani, Lieutenant, uh, Simone Lomani, um. Former coworker mine in Westfield, who's with the EPO, uh, I'm planning on, as long as he can attend, having him at that meeting.
That'd be great.
Although this one does not. It just has a seal of Massachusetts on it, Fish and Wildlife.
Right, so that says, land user copy, land owner copy, and this is the second one, so that's, I kinda like that idea, is not having the town be party to it. Cause it even calls in the question, some, I don't wanna have to be the one to be the arbiter. We should not be the arbiter of who gave permission to whom, that should be between two private parties on private land.
I'll leave copies.
And I don't wanna get ahead of the public meeting that we're going to have, but that's just my thoughts. Okay, Review of Land License for American Legion, I drew, drafted up some stuff this weekend to send to the attorney, but that's, we got plenty of runway there. Mass General Law sixty, sixty-one A, uh. We did not set a date for this, uh, I don't think we're ready to set a date for this, but it should be after, sometime after town meeting. And I will call your attention to the part of the chapter sixty-one A where. The, the protocol as written, um, so take some time to review it again ourselves, but I did call to your attention that. There are a lot of steps for the CAO to do in that process. And ownership of certain steps in the process belonging to the CAO. And hopefully we will be at a point where we will be seating a new CAO sometime after. The annual town meeting or around the time of the annual town meeting, so there might be intrinsic to. Coincide with all of this, not to, you know, but we could certainly have that, we also wanna get together with. The other boards before it gets too far into summer and people start going on vacations, so let's look to, say, May, late to early June. Questions, objections, commentary?
None, from me.
Uh, some will be looking for that a little sooner, but.
I saw some of the email, yes. But we, I think somebody, it was discussion about trying to get it in this week and I'm like, we're not ready for that, I don't think, we've got other stuff to go through and. I think with all the other stuff that's in flux, there's a lot of.
Moving parts.
Eyes spinning, yeah. Um, T-Mobile hometown grants.
Well, Mr. Dory laughed, but, um, as we stated, I was not aware that that's on the last. Park and Rec meeting, I am on the park and ready meeting agenda for this coming Wednesday. Um, after talking with the, the board members, uh, actually during the budget hearing. We know that the wifi is a very interesting topic that they, that they're talking about out there, um, I spoke with Kara today, um, and there is some interest now in possibly. Entertaining some of that money towards, um, the wifi, which is definitely allowable under their parameters. I've also trying to get an answer from someone, um, and that, that, that. Division of hometown grants, there's, there's no actual contact number for me to, I've looked everywhere, so I've had, I've sent the email out. Trying to determine if there's a possibility to split or use that money in more than one way, so. Whatever way we decide, uh, at the meeting on Wednesday, that's the way we're gonna go, if we're gonna try and split the two.
At the budget meeting, we had talked about. Uh, perhaps the locking system being CPC, but this might also qualify there.
That's what we're trying to find out, um.
And perhaps building and grounds submits one for the locking system. And park and rec submits one for the other.
We can try, but then we're kinda might cancel each other out.
They're competitive bids, right? Instead of trying to combine it and overwhelm.
I think there might be, I, when I heard that they wanted to try to put some wifi up at Holly Park, that piqued my interest to do something with wireless up there.
That's exactly.
And that might be right up their alley, if you get good signal up there with T-Mobile, I don't know the answer to that, um. Cause there's other things you can do with that. Besides the, the locking.
We're looking at a little while, like you said, before we get any sort of wire.
Three years, yes.
Yeah, I mean, I've seen the way, I, I had web CD fiber, you know, that's been a, I think they've just pretty much wrapped up in Westfield now, and that's. It was a ten-year process.
That's their own doing.
Uh, you know more, probably more about that than I do, but some.
They had some challenges up there, there's geographic challenges and density challenges.
So that's where that is.
Okay, Town Administrator Recruitment Panel, preliminary interviews, we have a meeting on Thursday, correct?
Thursday and the following Tuesday.
And the following Tuesday. Okay, and then, um, uh, on that note. I'll, uh, make note of the fact that I will be unable to attend the school budget hearing on Thursday, cause they moved the time till later and we have a meeting, so. Task has a meeting, so I will be at that, you guys are gonna have to.
I'll be.
Hold the line on the school, there you go.
You have a meeting Tuesday, those are interviews, correct?
Yes.
And then on that schedule, we were to be receiving. Candidate information on the eighteenth, the week of the eighteenth and twenty-fifth, so that'll be like. And then we're doing police.
Meeting on the.
And then we're doing police interviews the first, so we're gonna be cramming ourselves.
Yeah, you're gonna meet on the, we're, well, we're a week behind that number, I think. From the task, right, cause I think we got meeting, when are we meeting?
Fourteenth and nineteenth.
Fourteenth and nineteenth, so wouldn't expect anything from us until, from the task and. If they can, depending on when that is, they might meet again the twenty-first.
Alright, so we're pushing.
At least the twenty-fifth before you have anything and then, obviously, you're not gonna, we have police chief interviews on the first, for the backup date of the eighth. So maybe we would start the eighth, maybe, but then I'll defer to the chair of that committee on what they say.
I mean, we could call a special meeting and do it.
We always could do that.
Special meeting, so we can keep it moving, cause Carl will like that I said that.
Thank you, Diane.
Rather than push, let's pull.
Okay.
Nothing better than.
Well, I guess after.
A Saturday morning, a town hall in the spring.
After you're doing your nineteenth and you know where you are with those, we could decide that, right?
I will not be here that week.
The week of the nineteenth?
I am in Las Vegas starting Sunday.
Uh, which, which one there, sir?
The seventeenth.
Okay, thank you.
Seventeenth to the twentieth.
You're fine, you're more than fine.
Okay.
Right, we'd have to get them in.
I didn't think it would come that bad, but, I didn't know when you were talking about.
Well, you're gonna get, you're gonna get all three. Well, you're gonna get, you're gonna get all three. So you'd have to, you get and get them and review them, but you're gonna get at least three. That's the plan anyway. So anyway.
Okay.
And then master plan, I have not had a chance to. Uh, I did run into Mr. Doherty in the parking lot and we chatted and we agreed to chat more and um. I forgot to ask Carl if he had any new business.
Nah, I'm upset, sir.
Nadine? Jason?
I do. Um, unfortunately, we know. The unfortunate events that happened over the last couple of weeks of the school. Um, and on that note, I attended. The school committee meeting as I know Miss Yale did as well. Um, and after what I heard, one of the. About the key points was we need to work together and do better. Therefore, I spoke to Carl and I spoke with Nadine. And I'm asking the board to let me go forward with creating a comprehensive diversity, equity and inclusion initiative. Um, we'll work together, Nadine and I to come up with that. For the town.
Separate from what the school will be launching?
Two different governments, so yes. I mean, we would work together with stakeholders as a whole, but this is something I. One of the things I observed really that I saw from that meeting is that. My opinion, I, I think the school has stuck their head in the sand for too long. I spoke with many parents. Especially this week, some that are considering still pulling their children out of this school. And sending them in some cases back to other towns, other cities. I don't wanna have this be a, we get behind it. Um, I think this is too much of a topic and too much of an important. Thing in today's environment that we need to come up with um some sort of plan to um. Like better term, get ahead. I don't wanna see these problems come up again, especially at the town level. The school, again, I wanna work together with all stakeholders involved, but this is at our level right now at a town government level. I want to come up with some sort of initiative. Uh, similar to a harassment bullying type thing, which is all part of it and. Deal with this problem before it becomes a problem.
It isn't necessarily gonna impact what's going on in the school. I think you're bringing two different things into one.
No, I understand that.
They are talking about including. The select board as stakeholders and other town related entities into that process. Including civic groups and. Police. Town leaders.
It's something we gotta deal with one way or another, whether we do it with the school or not. So again, I would request that the board allow me with ACO. Uh, ACA Signoni um to work together on this, putting something together on our side and. If we work together as a whole town group, whether include the school committee or not.
Are you talking about just a policy on it or?
Working together to come up with some sort of policy and initiative to address this at a, really at a town level.
But can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
These are not mutually exclusive, but harassment and bullying. And we have a policy for that, I believe already and. In it, it's, it's intolerable. There's no room for that, no place for that.
Correct.
On a, on a, but is, do you really think that, and I don't mean to sound it that way, do you think that? It's a, a DEI initiative. Would have changed the situation that happened at the school?
I think if they'd been more, there had been more of an, of. How do I put this? Based on my discussions with parents and people involved there. The actions that were taken were not enough. And I'm not saying about what happened there. There's just not been enough focus on, it's, we all know it's a huge buzzword. We, the um, excuse me right here, I wanna make sure I say this the right way. Like I said, I. Nothing we could have done would have changed anything that happened at the school. And when we do know most of this happened outside the school. That's why I think, including the residents of the town, stakeholders, we need to come up with, whether it's with the school. A DEI initiative needs to be involved, created in this town. I spoke to numerous people that I asked them what equity is. They talk about equality. Equity and equality are not the same thing. They work together, um, but they are not the same thing. Um, diversity. There's not much we can do as a town government to increase that, but um, just some of the uh. Uh, the talks have like unconscious bias and stuff like that that we don't see. Sometimes some of the policies just include, you know, some of our own just internal policies. That some of the talks come up with, um, when we read some of the policies from other towns. We sometimes do internal postings, which are great. That's sometimes even that people consider is not inclusive. You know, I, you know, I, I'm all for taking care of our people. That's, that's not what I'm saying, but people look at things from different angles and look at that. There's a lot of people in this town that I've talked to that don't feel included in it. And they don't feel they have a voice. That's why I really think, especially in today's environment. You know, it's good to know what you've just told me Diane about the school, but you know, I understand they were looking to do something, but. I was more concerned with as the town as a whole, not necessarily just the town government. I think we need to, this is a topic.
That's what they want to do. That's exactly what they want to do. That's their plan. I've already put people in touch with them, other civic organizations that want to help them make it a townwide. Project. And they're still fleshing out the plan, but are collecting those names.
Okay. Well, that's good to know.
And I don't think we should be conflicting. The issue came to light with them. They should have an opportunity to do something if they need help. I think we're there to support them.
Under.
Definitely.
And, and, and not to disturb.
We're part of the stakeholders in that. I kinda feel it's their lead and we back them up.
I don't feel it's their lead at all. This is a town issue. This is a town issue in whole.
And they are going to make it townwide.
So it's not their lead. I think this needs to be a mutually.
I think it's a partnership and I, I disagree that it's a town issue. It's a societal issue. And you know, I don't know that. And I guess you, I can't say, well, the town is out, but can't move the needle because if more than one group tries to do something, that's how you move the needle. Also concerning to me. From the feedback is I. Diversity, equity and inclusion, for those that feel. They're not included. I would love to have more dialogue on that. And, and, and getting, I'm not, we're gonna come right back to what you're talking about, but. On the inclusion part. I would really love to have more dialogue on that, you know, and, and what can we do as a town, as a government? To be more inclusive, to allow more people to partake, right? And, and I, and I'm, no options are off the table for that because. We've sat up here, I've sat up here for nine years asking for, and maybe this is just the wrong answer, right? Nine years for people to come out and get on boards or run for office or do whatever. And you know, this year we finally had a pretty good crop of folks come in, right? And I'd love to have more and more people and we've had a plenty of people come in front of us and. And you know, the way we run in, especially in the Commonwealth with the open meeting law. And the open town meeting form of government, it's the purest form of government there is for public participation. Anyone that's registered to vote. Can come to town meeting and be heard and vote on everything and, you know, by the, with the way the budget works. The budget has a lot of legislative priority or projects in it. By voting up and down the budget, forget the other warrant articles, you set the legislative priority for the town. It's not just us three. Right? We, we work with the finance committee to craft a budget, but the budget decides who gets, who stays, who goes, what we buy, what we don't buy. And there's another warrant articles, I'm vastly oversimplifying, but. And, and I, I think that you look at on the buy, you know, and. We all, I think, I know I sat through at least two DEI things at. At MMA, I've sat through countless of them from suppliers that I deal with outside of here that have certain DEI initiatives. Watching what's going on um nationally with DEI both in both directions. You have some, some places that are all in and some places that are unwinding some of their DEI initiatives because. And I don't wanna, again, please, put down your pens, think that they're, the DEI initiatives went too far. I, and I don't, I don't, I'm not even gonna weigh in on any of that, cause I don't have, I don't even think I'm qualified to render an opinion on certain DEI. Type initiatives. Um, especially on the equity part, because you know, the, the gentleman at, at the um MMA spoke very eloquently about that. And hidden bias like you were talking. Um, but what struck me when you were talking was the um, the inclusion part. And you know, I think we, we really need to have it. I have no objection if we wanna come up with, if we wanna work. Obviously work hand in hand with the schools with whatever that they wanna do and to provide whatever level of support that we can provide. But then further, you know, if, if Nadine and yourself wanna, you know, just like we did with the boards process, you wanna. Champion that, it's certainly your prerogative and you're right. And we bring it back as a policy, as the policy setting board for the town of Southwick in, in conjunction with the CAO. And, and look at how we would do that by all means. I have no, I personally don't have an objection.
And I'm glad Ms. Gail, I mean, she had mentioned something to me that. They were looking at things at different angles, but I'm, I'm glad, you know. You know, that they're doing that, but like I said, not, I didn't mean it as a town issue, as if this is, we are a bad town or anything like that.
No, 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 but you, you, and you see what I'm.
And your societal issue is like, probably the best way to.
And you look at, you know, what happened in the schools and, you know, we spoke about that. We all signed on to. To a motion. I'm very pleased to see other folks from, from the room and on Zoom, you know. Sign on to that, that it's just, it's unacceptable in this day and age. And you know, I think you really have to start looking at, you know, some of the root cause of some of that. And, and it's not the school. That didn't happen at school, right? The school gets caught up in it and those issues tend to mushroom. Right? Where they start taking on, and I don't even pretend to know all of the facts that happened in this particular case. So, but you know, when any type of issue like this, well, then other things come up that this is also an issue and this is also an issue and they all need to be addressed. But, you know, in, in. We just gotta make sure that we don't swing the pendulum way in the wrong direction, right? And, and, and there, and there is that.
Be reactive.
Absolutely.
Purely reactive.
Why we wanna do this and get proactive.
That's how I look at it.
That's why I wanna be proactive about this.
So there's no harm in, in working with um Ms. Signoni. Never any harm in working with Ms. Signoni. She's awesome. And. Very few people have been harmed working with Ms. Signoni. Um, and, and to come up with something and we'll bring it back to this board and have a healthy discussion and I welcome, absolutely welcome. And I'm sure you and.
I for a time.
That anybody wants to come into this meeting or join on Zoom, cause we make that available, right? Um, on how we can, we can be more inclusive in what we're doing. Um, and I also urge anyone to come in and take a look at. Uh, you know, I, I welcome people to come take a look at. Look at our boards and commissions, look at the town hall staff, look at who works in town, look at people in leadership positions. Uh, look at department heads and furthermore, you know, I've had this, you know, I think I've shared with you and you in other commentary. You know, take a look and you, you can come to my workplace and take a look around and, 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 and just get it, you know. Take a look at that. I always wanna try to make sure that we're hiring the best people for the best, for, for the roles that we have. And, and, and just try to be blind to it. I know it's nigh impossible. And, and we talk about hidden bias and, and, et cetera, but I think that that's something that. You have to strive to do and as the select board, we've always strived to do it. I think we need to continue to do that. Um, and get the best person in a role and. That's, at the end of the day, that's really what we're trying to do here. So, and, and like I said, I would love to have discourse with anyone to come in with great ideas. Because there is no, um, you know, we don't have the market cornered on great ideas. Bring them. And let's talk about them. And, and if we can partner with the schools to, to do a better job, I, I'm, you know.
As I said, you know, Diane said it was about not being reactive and that's why, as I sat there, I said, I wanna be proactive about this. We need to just. Work on it and get ahead of it. And you know, like I said, one of the things that wasn't just some of the folks that were really there that were upset. We need to do better as a society. You put it better. Like I said, town, it just, that came out of my mouth, but. You are a hundred percent correct. Society, we need to do better.
And the one, you know, the one takeaway that I, I. And, and this isn't even select board stuff at this point. We're off the, way off the reservation, but. I don't know that you or me or you are in the greatest position to even. Here, I am, be frank, I'm sitting up here as a white guy. I don't know that I know all of the challenges that someone.
We don't get, that's one of the things.
And that's why I'm being very clear that bring, come to, come here, talk to us, we're humans. Help us understand so that we can avoid some of the pitfalls that we may or may not even unconsciously fall into or just fall into. And let's have those discussions on how we can all do better. Um, and at the end of the day, I want anyone, any applicant for any role or, well, first of all, anyone in this town. Whether you live in this town, work in this town, traveling through this town, you know. To be able to be, you know, to be able to enjoy and, and take advantage of everything this town has to offer. And secondly, if you're applying for a role, whether it's on a board, a commission. Or, or working for the town in a role, we get the best person for the job. I'll never use the word irregardless. I almost did, regardless of, of any other factor. So, you know, and we, I, that's, and that's all I'll say about that, cause I was shooting for seven o'clock and missed. But I think that that's, you know, it, it's a discussion we need to have, I think, but I think you have to, you have to tread carefully, very, very carefully. So with that. Where were we? We were at the rest of all business. Holy cow. You were on new business. That was.
You skipped it.
I know, I came back to it. So you have any other new business, Jason?
That is it.
Oh, good.
I have some old, sort of old business we've talked about before, just to update. I sent you all today. Um, I did two, two webinars on solar for nonprofits and um. All coming from the Inflation Reduction Act is where those refundable credits come from. I also shared that with some other community organizations, the School Rec Center, cause they're on projects with that too. Um, and then I guess when we meet again in the green community, we might talk about some other projects that we might pursue. That didn't make that list.
And I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing at my usage of the word irregardless still. I honestly believe that's not a word. It should never be used in public and I don't know why it slipped into my head. I said I won't use it, so we won't use it. It's not, it is, it is kinda quasi a word, but it's not a word.
That's it for me.
Okay. Old business? Old business?
None.
Carl?
All set.
Okay, uh, I covered one and just going into the police chief interviews just for one second, I mentioned it in passing. Um, we gotta get our questions down to five each. So I'll ask Nadine.
It might be easier for you and I.
I think so. Uh, so you have two weeks to whittle your way down to five.
Well, I haven't seen them all.
You don't get them all. You get of yours.
Yours. You get to go through your fifty.
Oh, I gotta pick five of my own. Oh, I thought five out of all of them, so I get to see if you had a better one.
I said, I, mine, Carl told me three to four.
Originally, originally, that's what we were doing with the board, would only do three or four questions, cause. Otherwise you'd have to schedule whole blocks of hours and sequester people so no one can. Know what's being asked of the other candidates and so forth.
And, and Mr. Doherty, if he watches this, uh, ranked choice vote them, because then when Nadine reviews all of the combined ones, if there are. Duplicative ones.
That's what I was gonna.
Then she can move down the list of mine or yours to pick other ones that are not duplicative.
Oh, I thought we were gonna get them.
No, unfortunately, it's not how it works under the open meeting law and all of that other stuff.
So you're saying fifty total or you?
I wanna get, I think we should have five times three, fifteen questions per candidate.
Can it be multiple part question?
Not A through Z, okay, with Roman numerals at the end. You have follow-up opportunities.
I know.
I was gonna say, from my, we're gonna go back to my expertise, that's usually what happens is you can have a follow-up or one of us can do a follow-up.
I did submit some that were multiple part based on your answer. Did this do that?
It all comes down to how much of a block of time do you wanna give each candidate for their interview?
Town hall closes at eleven.
I understand. No, it comes down to, do I want the best? I understand, no, it comes down to, do I want the best person chosen?
Correct, but we, within the practicalities are.
Okay.
Do it on an early afternoon if I was you. Whatever, you start the meeting at, around like two o'clock in the afternoon, give yourself plenty of time to do it. Cause it's an important interview, it's an important process.
I think they're gonna go about an hour plus, in past history, they end up lining up to be forty-five minutes to an hour each. We schedule them forty-five minutes apart from the second guy, that's just how it goes.
Was when you did nine questions.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm glad we talked about that, cause I totally misunderstood.
I mean, between half an hour to an hour, so, okay.
Okay. Since we're racing ahead of time, we have two minutes till seven fifteen. Uh, we'll go a little out of turn and ask if there's any additional public comment before we adjourn tonight.
I'd like to make a public comment.
Name and address for the record.
Inka Hotel in Fort Fett Plain Road. I've spent the past thirty years as an executive recruiter, doing executive search. I have seen that the landscape has changed significantly, especially at the C Street level. And we've been practicing a lot more with the behavioral assessments. Because it gets into the head of the person, a little bit more than an interview process, but on a psychological level and also behavioral level. So, in my professional opinion, it would be used as a tool. And it's an assessment, way above and beyond what you folks do with the questions. It just gives you a little bit more insight of how they might handle a situation and how they tick. Sometimes it's hard to do in an interview process, because they're putting their best foot forward, and they want the role. This just goes a little bit deeper on a psychological level, so there is some benefit to it. In my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else, buddy?
No.
Anyone on Zoom? Then I would gladly entertain a motion to adjourn for seven fifteen.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Doug Mogul, aye.
Jason Peron, aye.
Dan Gill, aye.